All right, we'll call the November 18th, 2019 City Planning Commission hearing to order. The time is 4:33. My name is Sam Rockwell. I'm the President of the Planning Commission. I'm joined today by my fellow Commissioners Allison Brown, Coleman, Lupke Pierre, Trader Olson, and Kronzer. Our first item of business today is to approve the minutes and actions of the November 4th, 2019 City Planning Commission hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Some more.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to review the Committee of the Whole report from Commissioner Lupke Pierre.
Yes, the November 7th Committee of the Whole approved land sales at 4105 12th Avenue South, 914 19th Avenue Northeast, land sales of the Minneapolis Homes Development Assistance, and a modification number three to the Housing Replacement District Plan.
Very good. Commissioners, I'll take that as a motion to approve the actions from the Committee of the Whole September 7th meeting. Do I have a second? Motion. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on, we will organize our agenda for this meeting. For those of you who are here, and the audience will walk through the agenda. If you wish to testify, to modify a staff recommendation, or against an item, please make that known when we touch on the agenda item. If you're here to speak in favor, you can do that at the beginning with the consent and don't need to raise your hand. So, item number one is the Weber Mart Bodega Smokes at 1701 44th Avenue North in Ward Four. Is anyone here to speak on item number one? Seeing no one, we'll place item number one on the consent agenda. Item number two is the Solar Canopy at 2740 31st Avenue South in Ward Two. Is anyone here to speak on the Solar Canopy? Is it here for the Solar Canopy?
Information, bud.
This isn't the right form for information. Could the planner, Erin, are you the planner? Erin can provide information about it. If you're not here to testify against it, you can touch base with a staff member for information. Great. So we'll place item number two on consent. Okay. Item number three, we'll discuss item number three, which is 521 Main Street Northeast in Ward Three. Item number four is Family Partnership at 1527 East Lake Street, 3013, 30, 37 Bloomington Avenue, and 3010 to 3048 16th Avenue South in Ward Nine. And I should note that there is an additional condition on the site plan review, item K, memorandum in our packets related to having three pedestrian entrances as shown on these updated building plans dated November 13th, 2019 along East Lake Street. Is there anyone here to testify on item number four? Seeing no one, we'll place item number four on consent. Item number five is the L U Twins 1212 Ninth Street South and 1225 Eighth Street South in Ward Six. Is anyone here to speak on item number five? Seeing no one, item number five will go to consent. Item number six is 910 Oliver Avenue North, Ward Five. Is anyone here to speak on item number six? Item number six will go on our consent agenda. Item number seven is Harrison Housing, 255, 261, 267 Gerard Avenue North, 232, 236, 238, 242, 244, and 250 Humboldt Avenue North in Ward Five. Is anyone here to speak on item number seven? One person is here on item number seven. We'll discuss item number seven. Item number eight is 2925 18th Avenue South in Ward Nine. Several applications there. Anyone here to speak on item number eight? Seeing no one, we'll put item number eight on consent. Item number nine is the Zoning Code Text Amendment in all wards. We'll discuss item number nine. Item number 10 is 14th Avenue Apartments, 854 902, 904, 14th Avenue Northeast in Ward One. Is anyone here to speak on item number 10? Seeing no one, we'll place item number 10 on consent. So, the agenda as amended is a consent agenda of items number one, two, four, five, six, eight, and 10. We'll discuss items number three, seven, and nine. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some more.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we'll open the public hearing on the consent agenda items. Is anyone here wishing to speak on those items? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on consent agenda. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some more.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, we will move on to our public hearing and we'll discuss item number three. Staff, Andrew Friends.
Good afternoon, President Rockwell and Commissioners. Before you today is an application for site plan review at 521 Main Street Northeast. The subject property is a corner lot located in the R5 district. Property is currently occupied by a duplex and a detached garage. The adjacent property to the south is occupied by a single-family home. An adjacent to the east is a six-unit multifamily townhome building. The surrounding area is developed primarily with low and medium-density residential uses. The applicant is proposing to construct a four-story, 29-unit residential building on the property. The first floor of the building would include four walk-up units and lobby space adjacent to Main Street Northeast and 6th Avenue Northeast, along with seven enclosed parking stalls. An additional seven surface stalls will be provided to the rear of the site. The property does not have alley access, yeah, property does not have alley access, and both the enclosed and surface stalls would be accessed off of a single curb cut on 6th. The property does qualify for transit incentive parking reduction to zero spaces due to the Route 11 bus and their proximity there. The primary exterior materials on the building are brick and metal panel with some fiber cement accents and rock face CMU on the first floor secondary elevations. The only application being sought today is site plan review. As conditioned, the project complies with all provisions of the zoning ordinance, does not require any variances or conditional use permits. Several public comments have been received regarding the application. Some of those were included in the initial staff report, some other ones you've received today. The project does request, or does require some alternative compliance, both for windows and parking and loading landscaping and screening. So as proposed, the first floor east elevation, which is what faces the parking area, shown at the top here, and the first floor north elevation facing 6th Street, require alternative compliance for window coverage. Staff is recommending that the Commission grant the alternative compliance facing the parking area, but staff is recommending, as a condition of approval, that they modify that north elevation facing 6th to meet that full 20% requirement. They are also requesting alternative compliance for the landscaping and screening for the parking area. As proposed, they're proposing a two-foot landscaped yard adjacent to the east property line and adjacent to that south property line between five and two feet in depth. They're also proposing screening of three feet in height. Staff is recommending that the Commission grant that alternative compliance request as well, but we are recommending a condition of approval that the screening be revised to provide at least 60% opacity year-round. So staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to the eight stated conditions in the staff report. The applicant has indicated that they are amenable to the recommended conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much. I'd ask the applicant to come forward and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. Sean Sweeney, one of the owners and developers of the project. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and thank you guys for your review. I think as Andrew highlighted, we worked really hard and very intentionally to create a project that fits current zoning and all the requirements, along with the walk-up units that we've created, trying to create a very active street there, something a little different than we're seeing over there. So we're here tonight, our architecture team is here as well, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. So thanks so much for having us.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. With that, I will open the public hearing. If you're here to testify on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tony Hofstadt, I'm 610 Ramsey Street Northeast. I'm a member of the St. Anthony West Neighborhood Board, and I'm speaking for the board and I'm speaking against the project. I wish to state, and what I have for the minutes as well, is our minutes that we had at our last meeting, which was Thursday, as well as the summary of our comments, which I can provide, and just the zoning and some other issues that we have as well. Our issue is, first of all, we voted not to support this proposal because at the north end of Main Street, which is about four blocks away, there's never, there are 615 units that are at that site, of which we've granted variances. Again, part of the issue is, what we keep finding in our neighborhood is that we have market rate housing, but we have no affordable housing. And this doesn't answer it either because it's the same issue. But in addition to that, we also have a number of issues that we would ask the city to address, which is environmental impact issues. As you know, this apartment sits probably a block and a half from the Mississippi River. There's density impacts, there's livability issues, and again, the way that we see this proposal, it doesn't meet our small area plan for St. Anthony West, nor does it meet the 2040 plan. We have an issue with the landscaping in the windows. They're not bee, bird, or butterfly friendly, and we think that should be in consideration, especially when you consider the neighborhood and its proximity to the river as such, and the flyover zone, which millions of birds take to every year. In addition to, we also question the architectural details. In order to make it congruent, almost every house that's around it is, has succo or some relationship to it. The brick is fine, the metal is not. So we're asking that that be considered. And there's also another condition that administratively, there is a building that is, I'm not trying to explain this, but 503, this is 521, 503 is another apartment, a four-plex that is going up, and it affects the two houses that are actually between those projected or proposed plans. And we ask that there be some pre-construction survey done for both of those properties, since it affects both of them. In addition to that, we also ask for fencing that's not just two feet, but that is helpful to the neighbor that's on the south side and on the north side, which affects both of them. And again, we also, there's an issue with trees that are planted in terms of how they might be more friendly. So I will give you my notes and the notes from the minutes that we have, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Very good, thank you. If you could provide the notes over to the clerk, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Is anyone else here to testify on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Sherman, 513 Main. I'm the one sandwiched in between the two apartments. And what I'd like to do tonight is just bring up some issues that I already presented to you in a letter, so you should have it in your packet. The letter was dated 1114. And I'm opposed to this apartment. This has always been a historical area. It has been residential, where we know everybody in the whole area. And by bringing in all these new people, this is going to create issues. So first of all, going through, just as a summary for the letter that I presented to you, first thing is neither 521 or 503, which are the two apartments, conform to the STANO Small Area Plan for 2016 in the following ways. Not in size, because they, we wanted a maximum of two-story. Not in the number of units. 521 should only be five to six units. 503 should only be two. And that is depending on how many units per acre. And STANO has requested 20 units per acre, and neither of these are even close to an acre. It is not, they are not conformed to the surrounding buildings, and they do not preserve the historical buildings in that area. And again, we are a historical site, even though someone has taken us off the registry, we were historical buildings. It also will have impact on the surrounding area because of parking and traffic, but most of all, because the people have spoken and they don't want any more apartments or developments in that area. We have over 400 petitions right now against this apartment, actually against both of the apartments. So because of this, we're asking you to decline and not approve the building of this building. Number two, we the people expect from here on out that we be notified immediately of plans for disturbing our neighborhood, as we have in the past. And I sent that letter to you today. It's a nine-page letter. In past times, we were notified of everything going on in the area, whether it was a small issue or a large issue. And this is a major issue. This can damage our houses. We will have no parking on the street because of over 100 cars between the two properties. This is, something needs to be done on this area. So I don't know if you are the ones that would need to act on this, but again, we expect to be notified ahead of time for anything like this, and not after permits are drawn. And number three, I personally have had an opportunity to engage some of the young people in the neighborhood, and they not only own bikes, they own cars. So I'm not sure where you're getting your information from, that everybody's going to be riding a bicycle, because with 30 below weather, I don't think too many people are going to be riding bicycles in 10 feet of snow. So what we also want is an impact study done on the effects of the 100-plus cars that are going to be in this neighborhood now. And what we're looking for also is, the new renters with these 100 cars, where are they going to park them? 6th Avenue is full, 5th Avenue is pretty close to full. So we want you to vote no on this, because of impact with the parking. We ask you to decline this apartment until the owners agree with the wishes of the people. And again, we have over 400 signed petitions against this apartment. The apartment should be two-story with five or six units, parking on-site, and conformity to existing buildings. And I know you're not voting on the 503, but that impacts me also, because it's right next door to me. That should be two stories and one to two units. Thank you. Oh, I do have one additional thing. You guys were talking about the fencing. I don't want a two-inch, or a two-foot fence. It has to be eight foot. I don't, eight foot, I don't want to see either building, so I want eight foot on either side. And I want trees planted so that it appears above the eight-foot fence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else here to testify on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Linda Palermo, and I live at 501 Main Street Northeast. I have lived in my house for over 50 years, so I've seen many changes over the years. It's very disappointing when homeowners don't have a say in these things, that builders can build apartments and pretty much whatever they want, it seems like. It's so frustrating to see these changes. I know we need accessible housing, but we have market rate and above. It doesn't meet the needs of the people that need housing. It meets people that can afford pretty much a lot of different things, not the people that are working at McDonald's and places like that. So I live on the block at 501 Main Street, and right now I have duplexes around me, and they block my driveway, they block in front of my house, the side of my house. I do not see that getting better with both the 521 Main Street property and the other one that's being built that you're not discussing today, the 503 Main Street property. I have a house that's over 100 years old. I'm concerned about the demolition from both of those properties, how it's going to affect my limestone wall basements and the structure of my house. I'm worried about the parking, how much of a nightmare more it's going to be than it is. There are many issues with this. I plead with you all to consider what the homeowners on the block and surrounding areas are saying to you. Find some way to get more parking at these places, at 521. And all these other issues that we are bringing up, please take this seriously, because it's a sad thing when we're ignored, and that we do different things to try to get our voice here, and we don't, because of this push for apartments in the city of Minneapolis. It's truly a sad thing when homeowners have no say. You know, you need to listen to all of us that are talking, that are concerned, that know that parking is an issue, and it's going to be even more so of issue when these places don't have enough parking where they're at. There's issues of it doesn't fit in the neighborhood because the surrounding houses are succo. It's so upsetting. As someone that's lived in my house as long as I have, I've seen empty lots build the houses. To take away homes, single-family homes and not have those anymore, it's a tragedy, because we want people to have home ownership. We want people to believe in the city. There's nothing wrong with renters, but when apartments take over a city, you know, where does that end? It just, it pushes property values up, where homeowners can't afford their places anymore. You know, people that have lived in your house for many years. It's sad. So I'm pleading with you all, please take that into account, what we are saying today of our concerns, and please find some way in your recommendations to incorporate these things, like adding more parking on the spot of 521. You know, the different things, the concern for the structure of our house when these demolitions are going on because of 503 and 521, how it's going to affect our house, the structures of our houses for the surrounding neighbors. So I think that's it. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else here to testify? Come on forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sheila Burnett. I live at 701 Main Street Northeast. I've lived there 31 years. Today is really sad day for many reasons. Over on Main Street and on 2nd Street, on Broadway, near Broadway, they're taking eight houses down. It just makes me sick. They're taking the Brick Brewmaster House, which of course nobody says is historic, but give me a break, give us our folklore. We have the Grain Belt Brewery. You know, they fought to not take the Grain Belt Brewery down in 1970. Could you imagine Northeast without the Grain Belt Brewery? I couldn't. Anyway, those houses are coming down as we speak, and then on the other side, this is happening for 521 and 503. I just think you guys are sending the wrong message, and so is the City Council. The fact that this very area we are discussing, in the 2040 plan, is supposed to be downzoned from an R5 between 10th and 3rd Avenue and Marshall and 2nd Street, where the maximum residential density would be 20 units per acre. This is .31 acre. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I also am wondering what the city is doing with housing altogether. This publication, this week, November 8th, page 36, it says, "A Long Room Prices Out New Buyers." And here we are, some states, such as Oregon, have imposed a statewide cap on rent hikes, while Minneapolis became the first major US city to eliminate single-family zoning. Now, I asked Steve Fletcher at our neighborhood meeting last week if he was okay with that. And he said yes, he was okay with that. He supports density of all kinds. Well, Steve's statement encouraged me, so much so that I have a possible alternative for the developers today. 521 Main Street was built in 1885 in the town of St. Anthony. It's 134 years old. And it's proved by, I don't know that you guys can see this, I don't know if I have any place that you can see it.
You can put it right there, and that light will come on. And then, yeah, just look up there so you can get the rotation right. There's a...
Oh, this way?
There we are. Yep.
Okay. So, "It earned historical status as evidenced by this city permit, which says, 'Issue no permits for building, moving, or wrecking without Heritage Commission approval.'" It is the first older structure I have seen with bay windows, not only on the front, but also on the sides. I'd like to show you guys that, too. There's the front of it. There's the side of it. So one of the options, of course, is to move this historic building, don't knock it down. Or Plan B, would it be to develop this four-story, 29-unit with 14 parking spots in a place with just as much acreage as this one has? And it's along the river as well. And the beauty of it is, it has the same owners who want them to develop the site in our neighborhood. Eric and Carrie Johnson, their address of their home built in 1923 is 16 East River And I'll show you there, that picture. If I have it? It is here somewhere? Oh, sorry. Right here. It's a lovely home, and it's the same size as the one they're proposing to take down in northeast Minneapolis. So I really want you guys to think long and hard. You're sending a message about zoning, and it's very important. But here we are, on this area, and it's zoned R2B, which would mean not more than three stories. And that's effective 2040, and we're saying, these developers came in before it was effective, so we're going to let them go ahead, knock it down, and build there. I think people who are going to come in after them are going to say, hey, they built four stories, I want to build four stories. And if you don't allow them to, they will probably sue the city. Different treatments for different people, for the same people, I should say. So as Linda and Mary, as neighbors, are talking about, here is the neighborhood. Here's the house that's on the corner, which is going to be replaced by this. A four-story, 29-unit, 14 parking spots. Really? Hard to believe. Here's the house, here's a little bit of extra room, lots of mature trees. Then there's Mary's house, which her family has lived in for 140 years.
119.
Huh?
119.
119 years, sorry. I overestimated. I guess I was getting carried away with the 1883, 134 years that this is. Anyway, so this is, and then this is the 503 building where they're going to do a four-plex, but it's more like 20 people will live there based on their drawings. I know they don't need any variance, but that's what's happening. And then Linda lives on the corner here. I mean, Northeast has always been a place, a haven for people, the working-class people. I really hate to see that taken away. Please consider the alternatives I presented today, and think about what you're going to zone when you do that 2040 plan. Remember, it goes to an RB on Main Street, which I think is an interior, too. It's not one of the big commercial quarters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dwight Weering. I live on the same block, around the corner. I've been there for quite a number of years, and I'm a licensed contractor, so I know what's going on. I know the feelings, I know the desire to build, and if... And a number of years ago, I was in the position of buying this little old duplex and making it better. And I came to planning and asked for, just to build a third story, so I could have the headroom in the attic. And I was in R5, I had the square footage. I owned the lot next to me. I have more than enough room. I can build a 12-unit right there. All I asked for was attic space. And planning says, no, this is a two-and-a-half-story neighborhood. So guess what I had to do? I had to build a lot of dormers on my house, so I could have a little attic space. Now, where's the consistency in planning? We have R5 zoning, but I can't build my attic, third story, but now we can have a 28-unit, four-story building, and actually a lot that's smaller than mine. So I'd like you to reconsider what's going on, because I don't think this is right, to keep me from doing what I wanted to do, which was much less than a 28-unit building, let alone a four-unit building. Mine is still a duplex. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Denise Gustafson. I live across the street at 500 Main, and I would just like to strongly oppose this. All my neighbors, I've known them for years, I've lived there 28 years. And like Dwight, I had the same problem to build a garage. I actually had to get a variance, and I was denied more than once just to build a detached garage. And the other thing is, traffic is unbearable in our neighborhood right now. During rush hour, we have standing traffic from 8th Plymouth back to my house, which is on 5th. Standing traffic, dust with no weather. And that's only been in the last two years, and it's only getting worse. I have never seen such bad traffic northeast, and I know it's all over the city because, for some reason, City Council thinks that people don't drive, and believe me, they all drive. Would it be a great world if we all just road bike and transit? Yeah, it would be great, but people drive. And the other thing is about, I'm also a Minnesota naturalist, and that BF Nelson, we fought like tooth and nail, they've tried to develop that. We fought with our neighbors to get, they wanted to build condos and a Marina, and we've been fighting, fighting, fighting. And back in the 70s, they tried to put a freeway through northeast. And it's always a dumping ground. And finally, our neighborhood has some stability, and now you're going to let this 29-story, which has like no green footprint. I mean, literally, it's like, how can that even possibly exist on that footprint of that lot? So I'd really be strongly opposed to this. This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have site plan review before us with a number of conditions. Is there any discussion, questions of staff? Or a motion? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, I have a question for staff. The staff report says the site is not within boundaries of any adopted small-area plans, and we've heard comments, testimony from the Neighborhood Association that it is, so if you could explain that discrepancy.
Sure. President Rockwell, commissioners, the neighborhood organization wrote a small-area plan. I believe it was in 2015, it may have been 2016 when it was finished. That small-area plan went to the City Council in 2017 as an informational item. It was not adopted by the City Council, so that small-area plan is not adopted city policy. My understanding is that the City Council did not adopt the small-area plan because we were already in the process of writing the new comp plan, and there was not a desire to go and amend the current comp plan while we were currently writing the new one. Some of the recommendations from that small-area plan that was not adopted were incorporated in the 2040 plan, but that small-area plan itself is not adopted policy.
Can you articulate which policies were adopted into the plan and which were not?
Commissioners, that's not something that I worked on personally, so I'm not familiar with all of the details. I believe that the general guidance for this area as interior three was based in part on that two-and-a-half-story guidance that was in that neighborhood small-area plan. But I was not personally involved in making those decisions. On the comprehensive plan website, there is a section that addresses each small-area plan affiliated with the current comprehensive plan and discusses how those, I'm sorry, those small-area plans were incorporated in the new comp plan. And there is a section for this small-area plan, and you can reference that, but I did not work on that personally.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions of staff? Thank you. Any discussion or motion on site plan review? Yes, Commissioner Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move approval of Item A, the Site Plan Review with the eight stated conditions.
We have a motion to approve Site Plan Review with the eight stated conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Commissioner Schrader.
I'd just like to propose a kind of friendly amendment, additional condition. We heard from the neighbors just that there wouldn't be, the screening was a little lacking by their property. I would just add a ninth condition to make sure that there is at least some screening for the neighbors in the area.
Yeah, Mr. President and Commissioner Schrader, I'm open to adding that ninth condition. And Commissioner Schrader, I might just want to get some clarification along which, is there a particular lot line, the east or south?
This would be with the neighbor from 521. Excuse me. 513.
All right. So I'll just amend my motion to add a ninth condition that the applicant work with staff to add screening along the south property line.
That sounds good.
I'm sorry, not at this point.
And, Mr. President, I can speak to my motion.
Yes.
As well. And I know we heard from the neighbors some concerns about this, but ultimately, the applicant is only applying for a site plan review. There are no variances. This property is zoned R5 and has been for some time, so a building of this density and of this bulk is allowed by right. And even the alternative compliance requests are really mitigated by the conditions that staff is recommending. So I feel that we're really in a position to have to approve this generally as it is.
Thank you. Commissioner Lubke here.
I mean, I wanted to agree on the comments made by Commissioner Brown. I think unfortunately, we are limited in our purview. We can't jump to the future. It's currently zoned R5, so we have to respond with that, as well as it's not required to have parking. So we can't mandate something that's not required. We can only administer the rules that have been created. And I think it's a shame to lose a historic resource. I think that it's not a sustainable solution to demolish old homes. I think that it would be nice if the developer chose to relocate that home if they were choosing to build this here. Again, nothing we can mandate at this point unless we start having mandatory demolition or relocation of structures in this city, which we don't currently have. That said, though, I do find the alternative compliance to be a little bit weak, particularly as it relates to landscaping and screening. So I actually, in the discussion about the ninth condition, I'm thinking that it would be nice if a significant portion, excuse me, of the green space provided was pollinator-friendly landscaping and increased landscaping along the south sides particularly, but rather than grasses, perhaps some pollinator turf, as it were, which I understand is some sort of clover blend. We have a lot of resources here in our state, and specifically in Minneapolis with the university. I think it wouldn't be too much of an ask to add some more green amenities since it's, you know, I think severely lacking around the parking. And given the fact that it's in an established neighborhood, we can all use more opportunities for making our city better, and it's more in keeping with the comp plan in terms of sustainability to do so. So I guess I would ask for that ninth condition to be a little bit more robust, asking for the grasses, at least everything not in the boulevards, to be considered pollinator planting. It'll actually be low maintenance, lower maintenance in the long run anyway. So I don't know if that's a friendly amendment that can be added or added to the ninth condition already, but I think that the alternative compliance, as it currently is standing, is still a little weak.
Defer that to Commissioner Brown.
I'm comfortable with adding some of that language to that ninth condition.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, any further discussion? Any further friendly amendments to friendly amendments? No? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Site Plan Review with the eight stated conditions, adding a ninth condition to work with staff to increase, let's say, increase pollinator-friendly landscaping along the south side.
And other rest of the yard as well.
And then other parts of the yard as well. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lubke here?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
8-0.
Motion carries, and that concludes our work on Item Number Three. Our next item will be Item Number Seven. At Gerard Avenue North, staff is Peter Randall.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our next project is located in the Harrison neighborhood of Minneapolis with nine parcels fronting along both Humboldt Avenue North and Gerard Avenue North. The parcels are currently occupied by single and two-family homes on five of the parcels, and then four are currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structures on the site in order to construct a new four-story residential building with 95 dwelling units. These are some images of the existing structures and the existing parcels. And then an image of the proposed structure. All of the existing parcels are currently zoned for the R2B. The applicant is requesting to rezone all of the parcels to the R5 district. The proposed project is located within one-half mile of two future light rail transit stations and does qualify for the reduction in required parking. Those two stations are the Van White Station on the Blue Line extension along Olson Memorial Highway, and then the Bassett Creek Valley Station of the Green Line extension, which is currently under construction. Other applications include two yard variances of the two front yards along Humboldt Avenue North and Gerard Avenue North. Along Gerard, the front yard is established by the existing single-family residential property to the north. And then along Humboldt Avenue North, the request is to reduce the front yard from 15 feet to 11 feet. In both cases, those yard variances include patios and balconies that exceed the maximum size in a required front yard. The applicant was responding to staff and neighborhood feedback to include some more active frontage along those two corridors. Initial feedback was, and this was discussed at the committee of the whole, was to try to incorporate walk-up units along particularly Humboldt, but the grades on the site made that difficult. And so the compromise that the applicant came up with was to do front patios along Primary exterior materials include metal panel, fiber cement, and brick. And then there is a significant amount of landscaping, particularly along the south interior side yard. As you can see, the building kind of pulls back a little bit from that adjacent residential parcel to the south. As I stated in the opening, the applicant is proposing 80 on-site proposed structured parking spaces that would be accommodated in an underground garage at one level, and then an at-grade garage. Those two different enclosed garages would be accessed from two different vehicle entry points, one along Second and then one off of the Gerard frontage. The other thing that I should point out is that, the other issue that I think we discussed in the COW meeting particularly was in regard to the principal entrance along Gerard, which at the initial iteration of this project had been pulled back pretty significantly from the front property line. Feedback from the commission was that the applicant pull that entrance further toward the street and create more of an inviting entryway there. And the applicant has responded to that with a revised proposed front entry, which you can see in this image, along Gerard Avenue North. In addition to that, the parking along Humboldt and partially along Gerard is lined with active residential amenity uses. So I can stop there and take any questions if there are any. I know the applicant's also here and can speak to any of the design issues.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you. Peter, if the applicant come forward, introduce yourself.
Good evening, President Rockwell, Commissioner. My name's Jonathan Sliderman. I represent the developer, would-be developer of the site. We started talking with a large property owner earlier this year, a gentleman who's assembled quite a few parcels in this neighborhood over the last 20, 30 years, and engaged with him to acquire these nine parcels, four of which are vacated at the moment. We started working our way through the COW, took feedback, and tried to make changes to the best of our abilities. We started engaging with the neighborhood, and there's quite a few neighbors who are here tonight and hopefully will speak on our behalf, as well as we spoke with the Bassett Creek rock who provided a letter of support for the project. In response to concern for the existing residents who potentially would be displaced, we've made a proposal to provide three months relocation assistance to those current residents at the time we're ready to commence construction. That is not required by any code or ordinance, but that is something that we feel is right and should be done. That's kind of where I leave off. We're excited about the project. We think this plays into an area that's going to have a lot of transits in the near future, and this is a transitional block. We're on the north side on Glenwood, there's commercial property, and there's a commercial property on the southeast corner of Second and Gerard as well. And there's quite a few vacant lots in this area where we're trying to build the structure. If there's any questions, I'm happy to do what I can.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much. I will open the public hearing. If you're here to testify on this item, please come forward, state your name and address
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bueller. I'm the executive director for the Harrison Neighborhood Association, and I am here tonight on behalf of our board. We would like to express our opposition to the Harrison Housing Development Proposal, and respectfully ask that you deny Mr. Sliderman's petition to rezone the properties and for his requested variances. For 35 years, the Harrison Neighborhood Association has worked to create a peaceful and prosperous community that equally benefits all of Harrison neighborhood's diverse racial, cultural, and economic groups. In 2005, in tandem with the creation of the Bassett Creek Valley Master Plan, HNA's Board of Directors and the Bassett Creek Valley Redevelopment Oversight Committee adopted the guiding principles for redevelopment of the Bassett Creek Valley. One of the guiding principles calls for no displacement of existing residents. Due to the fact that this development seeks to displace existing Harrison residents, HNA has concluded that it cannot lend its support to the project. While HNA appreciates Mr. Sliderman's willingness to provide residents with relocation assistance, we cannot get around the fact that the project will lead to the displacement of current, longtime residents who would like to stay in their homes. HNA would also like to note that while the Bassett Creek Redevelopment Oversight Committee has offered its support for this project, they have done so in violation of the guiding principles of redevelopment that they agreed to abide to, I'm sorry, that they agreed to abide by less than 15 years ago. In addition to our concerns regarding displacement, HNA is concerned about the net loss of units affordable to Harrison residents. The proposal calls for the demolition of 10 existing naturally occurring affordable housing units, and while Mr. Sliderman intends to construct nine units that housing units, and while Mr. Sliderman intends to construct nine units that would be affordable at 60% of area median income, those units are just still not within the reach of our residents. In Harrison, our area median income is $34,000, and so 60% of AMI is still like twice as much as what our residents, the majority of our residents can afford. I just want to make clear that the Harrison Neighborhood Association is not anti-development or anti-density. We've worked with a number of developers on projects in the neighborhood. Recently, we worked with Art Space on the Northside Artist Lofts. But this project, just because of the displacement that it would cause, and the fact that our residents have been longtime residents, they don't want to see their community broken up. Like, we just can't support this project. And so we ask that you please deny the petition for rezoning and variances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Yes, come to the mic, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jerusha Seim. I live at 250 Humboldt North, one of the homes where they are looking to do this development. My husband, Jason, and I have been there for 10 and a half years now. We love the neighborhood, we would love to stay, and just the thought of the idea they're proposing, it just, it's heartbreaking because these homes are over 100 years old, a lot of them, there's a lot of character there. Yes, there are some vacant properties which one of our other neighbors who's here has tried to buy to build a home, which would, you know, be more in line with the other houses that are on the block. And basically, that was kind of swept under from him, and we've put in offers to purchase our home from our landlord as well. So we just feel that it's a bit unfair to, you know, us as people who love the neighborhood and have tried to be, you know, good neighbors and all of that, bring things to our community, and just to see, just to feel that we are not valued, basically is kind of how it feels, and that, you know, somebody with more money can just come swoop in and just level it all, pave paradise, put up a parking lot, is how it feels. So, trying to think if there's anything else I have to say. We definitely are not opposed to development. It's just the specific type would not only displace us and remove us from our homes and community, but it would also leave our neighbors across the street with a completely different atmosphere. Their homes would be, you know, just blocked by this four-story thing too. And then it's, you know, where does it end? You know, block after block, this will just keep happening, and then there's less and less affordable housing. I'm a teacher, I don't make a lot of money, and I don't see that changing in the near future. It's like, you know, I don't know. Please save us, that's all.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Please state your name and address for the record.
Aaron Goldstein. I'm one of the owners at 241 Fremont Avenue, 1207 Glenwood Avenue, and also 1515 Glenwood Avenue. For full disclosure, I am involved with, in the development here with John, and been actively involved in the neighborhood for the past couple of years. Couple of my tenants at 241 Fremont Avenue are Ladonia Brewery and Royal Founder Craft Spirits. And as I first got involved in the Harrison neighborhood a few years ago, all we heard was how excited people were for these new amenities to be finally coming to the neighborhood that people had been waiting for for so long. And through our investments, we've, our tenants have created over 30 full-time jobs in the neighborhood with more to come. There's a couple new office buildings coming online, both on Glenwood and Wellington's project at the former Leafline site. And really, the last, like, the last thing we're waiting for is more housing here. And through this process, I think we've been very respectful and transparent with the folks that live in the neighborhood. As John mentioned, the relocation assistance funds have been offered here, and also the right to return to this building once it's built is proposed to these tenants has also been offered. So the folks that are getting displaced would have, be at the top of the list to come back to the building, because we know how much they want to be in the neighborhood. And so, just want to offer my support for the project. I'm super excited about the Harrison neighborhood and what we've been working to create there, and hope that you guys will help us make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing no one. Okay, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. If there's anyone else, please come up right after this.
My name is Nestor Garcia. I live in the Harrison neighborhood, 350 Logan Avenue North. I lived there for the last six, seven years. I also work for Harrison Neighborhood Association. We've never been against any sort of development in the neighborhood. We've always been open to that because we know that there's going to be a lot of interest coming because of the new light rails and all those sorts of things. So, we're not anti-development. We support it as long as it doesn't displace current living residents. And that's been the stance of HNA even before I was working there. So, there's plenty of other land in Harrison that's vacant that could use some developing, but this project is not the one. It is currently kicking out, I don't know, 20, 20-some people, residents living in the neighborhood. Some of them have lived there for as long as 10 years. And we don't want to see nobody being displaced. We've seen people being displaced from Harrison for many, many years. A whole apartment building is just getting bought up, and, you know, rent's increased overnight and drives a lot of people out. This is a different sort of displacement. They do have the right to come back and live in the building, those sorts of things. But it's different from having a backyard. Some of these residents have gardens with those sorts of things. Those are not available in a small apartment, you know. It's going from a home to an apartment building, which is really, you can't really compare those two to each other. So, I'm also in opposition to the project, and I hope you guys consider the same. I don't know if you guys have ever been in a situation where you've lived in a place for 10 years and are asked to move away and you can't do anything about it. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Come on up.
Greetings. I am Jason Seim. I live on Humboldt, 250 Humboldt. And basically, I've been there for 10 years and love the neighborhood, really gotten to know the neighborhood. And it's been really weird because we've had a couple vacant lots there that, like was stated before, that have been tried to been bought and developed on, but they were kind of, I don't know how you say, sold with the intention, sold to the current, or current landlord with the intention to buy or to build on them. But they've just been sent, basically, not developed for six, seven years, to, you know, prevent other people from doing that. We've offered to buy on our house. And as far as development goes, we have the new artist co-op that's being built. Nobody opposes that. That's absolutely fine, because it's not displacing, I don't know how many houses. There's another office building up that's going up. That's basically, you know, an empty lot as well. Nobody opposes that. In the area, there are tons of areas right outside of Harrison that do not displace people, that can be developed, that are just old, old buildings falling down from basically Lindale all the way up to Humboldt or Gerard, in between Glenwood and I think Second. But, you know, it's tough, tough to get displaced when you've been there for 10 years. It's, you know, it's, you know, but a lot of our neighbors definitely don't want to go, and a lot of the people around the area have, don't even really know about this because it's just, we honestly did not get very, what would you say, advance warning from our landlord, like I thought we felt we should. You know, it felt like it came on very quickly. All this is basically taking place in the last three months, you know, I would say, since, what, end of August? So, we've only found out about this by like the end of August, and it's what, mid-November? So, I mean, anything else?
Through Harrison Neighbors.
Oh, through, yeah, Harrison Neighbors. Thank goodness for Lisa here that, you know, made it known to us what's actually going to happen, or else we wouldn't have even known until, basically, we got a letter that said goodbye, you know? And basically, that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Laura Dickinson. I've lived for 25 years in Harrison neighborhood. My address is 214 Gramercy. I am so thrilled with this. I seriously hope this goes.
You step forward to the mic.
I seriously hope this goes through. The poor neighborhood has just suffered for years and years and years, and finally there's investment coming. Finally, we're going to have maybe a grocery store, maybe a restaurant. I'm thrilled with this. I hope you accept them, and we have new development in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Grant, 244 Humboldt. I'm getting displaced, and so the ones who aren't getting displaced are happy. Yeah, we wouldn't have known except that we have a practically nationally famous neighborhood association that developed the rubric that's used around the country to assess the way development is affecting things, Harrison Neighborhood Association, who is also getting displaced by the Minneapolis Public Schools, but I guess that's a separate issue. But it's only because of their being so much on the ball that we even knew. And I, it's the nicest place I've ever lived. I have an organic garden. There's no reason why grocery stores and whatnot can't be built in the neighborhood without needing to put in nearly 100 units that we can't afford. It's not, it's not going to be affordable for us. So I just feel just really upset about it, and not only did our landlord not tell us, the truth is that he has continued to rent out a couple other houses that were vacated because the people knew that we were going to be booted quite possibly. I mean, I know it hasn't quite been approved, but that it's possible. Anyway, anyway, he's, all I'm trying to say is we were not informed by the landlord and, yeah. So, I just hope that it doesn't go through. I, it's the nicest place I've ever lived. I can afford to live there. I'm a partially disabled vet, and it just really suits me to live there. And I hope that you, we'll just take into consideration that you're booting a lot of us, and the two women that live upstairs weren't able to come. I don't think they're here. No, they're not here. They had to work. So anyway, please keep us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have four items before us. Are there any questions? Commissioner Lipkeep here.
I have a question for the applicant. So really quickly, someone mentioned the right to return, that they're offered that opportunity. Is it, I don't know what they pay currently for their rent, is what they're being offered the right to return for commiserate with that, or is it at a higher rate?
The proposed rental rates for the new projects will run from 900 up to 1600.
But for those four, I think it's four households, I think, is what they identified. For those four that are being displaced, are they being offered that market rate or a rate commiserate of what they're paying now? Which I don't, I don't know what it is, and I don't need it on the record. I just wanted to know if that's the right to return, or is it just a right to return?
The right to return will be based on their own incomes, and if they qualify for affordability, they can have an affordable unit and will be following the 2040 ordinance.
But is it at, I know the 2040, but is it compared to what they know? Because I would assume.
The rents in place right now are, they run an average, well, they run about $1,000 on the units. There's nine units there right now, and the average rental rate is $1,000. So we will have units that are in fact cheaper. The argument is, is it a like-kind unit? But they, as far as their right to return, to the extent that they provide us information on how to stay, you know, in touch with them, they can come back and they can, if they qualify for affordable rental rates, they can have one of those units at the affordable level. Otherwise, it'll be at market.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions, discussion, motions? Four items before us, rezoning, variance, variances. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start with item A, the rezoning, and I'll move approval of that item.
We have motion to approve item A, the rezoning. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
I think with this item, we have the policy support and the comprehensive plan for this rezoning, especially since it is within the station area, within a half-mile radius of two planned LRT stations. To have higher R, like R5 zoning as opposed to R2B is well-supported at that location.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Seven to one.
Motion carries. We have two variances related to yards and site plan review. Commissioner Brown.
And I'll take items B and C together. I'll move approval of both items B and C, the yard variances.
We have motion to approve items B and C, the yard variances. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Last, we have site plan review for a new four-story building. Commissioner Brown.
And I'll move approval of item D, the site plan review, with the seven stated conditions.
We have motion to approve site plan review with the seven stated conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
And I'll just address, we heard from several residents of this area, and I acknowledge that is disheartening and frustrating to be relocated. I know this is a little bit of an unusual project in that there are quite a number of houses that will be demolished for it, as well as some vacant land that I think everyone assumed would develop at some point. However, in the current zoning code, there really isn't a lot we can do to address the issue of relocation, so I'm supportive of the site plan review.
Commissioner Lipkeep here.
Yeah, I just wanted to address just the site plan review as a land use application itself unrelated to this neighborhood issue, but we asked the architects to make improvements to the site plan related to having more eyes on the street, more connections to the neighborhood through patios and plantings and connections and pulling entrances forward, and I do want to say that I appreciate that they actually accommodated that in the plan that they had for their development. So I wanted to say that I'd be speaking, or voting in support of the site plan itself.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight zero.
That includes our business of item number seven. Next up, we have item number nine, zoning code text amendment.
Good afternoon, President Rockwell, planning commissioners. Item number nine is for the zoning code text amendment, amending regulations for the inclusionary housing ordinance. Staff is proposing to amend Chapters 530 Site Plan Review and Chapters 535 Regulations of General applicability. Staff introduced two additional chapters that we are asking to be returned to the authors, Chapter 520 introductory provisions and Chapter 525 administration and enforcement. On September 27, 2019, Council President Bender and Council Member Schrader introduced subject matter to amend the city's inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing ordinance in addition inclusionary housing ordinance, in addition to make updates to our unified housing policy for a permanent inclusionary housing policy and ordinance, intended to promote affordable housing in, in order to fulfill goals for the city's housing policies and to ensure that moderately housing, moderately priced housing is provided in mixed income developments where we would normally or typically experience market rate development. This work began in 2017 when Grounded Solutions Network was awarded a request for proposal to conduct a financial feasibility analysis and policy research, looking at best practices nationally and to inform recommendations on our current interim policy and ordinance. On December 17 of 2018, City Council approved amendments to the zoning ordinance and unified housing policy to require inclusionary housing in two circumstances. So the zoning ordinance is where the threshold information was kept. So in light of additional density allowances with the Minneapolis 2040 Plan and effective January 1 of this year, if a project was seeking a rezoning for at least one parcel to a district that did not previously allow for multiple family, then inclusionary would be required. In addition, if an applicant was looking to increase the development capacity and that was calculated through an increase of floor-to-air ratio through a combination of things, it could be rezoning, density bonuses, PUD alternatives, or an FAR variance that gave the development at least a 60% increase from what the zoning code would otherwise allow, that would also trigger the inclusionary zoning requirements. During this interim phase, which again started on January 1, 2019, we have approved four projects through the process. One was exempt because they were already required to comply with the city's unified housing policy through programs and affordable dollars that were already associated with it. Another was a condominium project. And the one project that has been fully approved and through the process was for a seven-unit building at 2521 Bloomington Avenue. We heard a project just now, item number seven, the Harrison project, would also be subject to inclusionary housing. So 10% of those units would be required at 60% AMI. That project was not seeking any subsidy. So kind of moving into what are the current regulations. So in order to comply with inclusionary zoning today, the developer has two choices. One is to provide 10% of the units at 60% AMI or they can seek city subsidy through inclusionary zoning tax increment financing, where 20% of the units would be required at 50% AMI. As was alluded to in the earlier presentation, tenants and residents of those units would have to income qualify within those percentage ranges. So as we go through the proposed text amendment this evening, I want to note that most of the substantive changes are really occurring in the unified housing policy. Andrea Brennan, our Director of Housing Policy and Development, is here also to help support if there are any additional questions from the Planning Commission today. So I'm going to walk through most of the Grounded Solutions Network presentation just for simplicity and some of us have already seen this presentation and I think they just did a really nice job of making the policy and the ordinance very clear. So just to restate what the goals of the proposed text amendment to amend regulations are, to encourage both production and feasibility. So the proposed regulations are not intended to stop development and instead recognize that the city is in need of affordable housing. We have many policies that were included in the staff report, both in the current Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth and Minneapolis 2040, that encourage onsite production of mixed-income housing and mixed-income communities. Staff is also looking for a policy and text amendment for simple implementation. Some of the feedback we had received during the interim is that it was a little bit difficult to digest some of the information. So staff made many attempts to clarify what the current regulations are. So going forward, we're hoping that they're simple and easy to implement. There are some caveats to some of our recommendations as well. So as I kind of mentioned, this is where we've been with the interim inclusionary ordinance and policy. I should also note that during the interim inclusionary policy, there were two exemptions. One was for student housing and there was a definition in the unified housing policy, and then condominiums were also exempt during that interim phase. So the new proposed requirement for rental is that 8% of the units, instead of 10% of the units, be provided onsite at a 60% AMI. The developer would also have the option to seek 20% of the units at 50% AMI when seeking IC TIF, or a third option where 4% of the units would be provided at 30% AMI. As a proposed zoning ordinance notes, the threshold for triggering the IZ requirement is at 20 units. So 19 and under would be exempt from the ordinance and therefore exempt from the policy. During a phase, staff is recommending a delay in implementation. So for buildings, either mixed-use or purely residential, for rental, that they come in with a size of at least 20 to 49 units, staff will exempt the first 500 permitted units, so units in buildings that receive a building permit, and then delay that implementation another six months from that point. So officially, the threshold is 20 units, but during this delayed implementation, it will be 50 units. So at 50 units and greater for the time being and will update the Planning Commission as that occurs, the threshold will be at 50 units or above. There is also a recommendation to scale the proposed requirement for buildings that have less than 100 units, where they exempt the first 15 units. So as you can see in the table, we'll just give an example at 50 units. We would exempt 15 units and therefore only 35 would be subject to the requirement. So then 8% of those units onsite, or in this case, it would be 2.8 units, would be required to be affordable. How we plan to address those fractional units, to avoid that one over, one under, is that the developer could choose to round up. So in that case, they could go to three dwelling units instead of 2.8, or they could provide two units onsite and then they would pay it in lieu fee for that 0.8 units. We are also opposing to delay implementation for ownership. So for the first 500 units permitted, there would not be a requirement for inclusionary zoning to be applied to ownership housing. And then once that 500 units in ownership is hit, then we would delay the implementation six months from that point. And the first requirement is proposed to be 4% of the units at 80% AMI. And similarly, at 1,000 units then from that, from this initial point as well, January 1 of 2020, after 1,000 units permitted, it would go up to 8% of the units at 80% AMI. Staff is no longer proposing exemptions for student housing. We recognize that residential uses will be subject to this requirement. So student housing that would otherwise be allowed off-campus would be subject to the inclusionary zoning policy. In the zoning code presently, we have land use definitions and within the use table, dormitories, fraternities, sororities, those uses would be exempt from this ordinance as they are typically affiliated with a university or college. The proposed update to the unified housing policy also introduces three compliance alternatives. The goals for compliance alternatives are to still encourage production and feasibility, mixed-income communities, and have equivalent number of affordable housing units, either onsite or nearby. Staff is proposing an in-lug fee. The fee is set to be moderately higher than the affordability gap, as demonstrated in this slide here. Specifically, the onsite requirement would be 8% of the units and the in-lug fee is set to assume a 10% of the units at an affordable rate at 60% AMI. The in-lug fee is calculated differently for buildings at seven stories and under at $15 per square foot, and that's calculated on a net residential square footage, so the leasable square footage within a project for residential. And then it would increase to $22 per square foot for structures that are eight stories and greater. These are the considerations for the in-lug fee. The in-lug fee, at the point at which ownership would be required to comply with inclusionary, would be set at the same calculation, $15 per square foot or $22 per square foot based on height. Staff is also introducing off-site development to allow for development to occur with greater affordability within a half-mile of a market rate development. There's a recognition that there's benefits to the city in providing more affordable units when partnering with affordable housing development, and so therefore that is allowed. And staff would be looking, and the council would be looking for at least the same public benefit as they would otherwise experience for that market rate onsite, and that the market rate developer must make a meaningful contribution. That information is to be fleshed out and is not going to be available right away on January 1, 2020, but phased in June 1 of 2020. I have a timeline coming up here in just a moment. Staff would be looking for concurrent occupancy of both the market rate and the affordable project, or the affordable project being built first to ensure that those units are created. And that staff may also recommend off-site projects determined within the parameters of the City Council, but that would be under their purview. And then the third option for a compliance alternative is land donation. Again, this compliance alternative would not be available right away in January, but instead would be part of the unified housing policy, June 1 of 2020. So donating land must be greater than or equal to the appraised value than the in-lug fee. It has to be a location where there is need for affordable housing, where there's a deficiency in affordable housing in the city, and it has to be allowed for development for residential. It couldn't be industrially zoned, for example, or something slated for production and processing in the Minneapolis 2040 Plan. Here's a timeline for effective dates for the updates. So we are here before you today to review the zoning code text amendment. This will go on to the Zoning and Planning Committee on December 6, I believe, and then on to the full council for adoption this year. This ordinance would be effective on January 1, 2020. So at the same time, the policy would also take effect. So we'll be going to the Housing Policy and Development Committee of the City Council on December 5, and then similarly adopted by the City Council this year, effective January 1. The two additional compliance alternatives that I mentioned earlier would be available 6, 1 of 2020. And then we would be reviewing fees and onsite percentages required as we do some analysis. During this interim phase, we did not have a substantial amount of projects to really learn from. What we also did learn is that none of the developers took advantage of the revenue offset tax increment financing program, where the Grounded Solutions Network had concluded that it might have been more financially feasible or more financially beneficial to the developer to provide 20% of the units at 50% AMI. We have had a large number of feedback related to the proposed zoning ordinance amendment and the policy. Those were included both in the packet and then you received an additive packet today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Lipkeep here.
Yeah, hi, Shannon. Good job. Couple of questions. What if somebody wants to do compliance alternatives in February? Do they just have to wait or what's the scoop?
In February or January 1?
Yeah, January 2nd, let's say.
Sure, January 2nd. A developer could take advantage of one compliance alternative right away, and that's to pay the in-lug fee. If they wanted to seek other compliance alternatives, those will not be available until June 1 of 2020.
And are those still getting fleshed out then? Or what's?
There's a great deal of detail and nuance that go into making sure that we get those to correct and making sure the compliance manual is prepared and that we, that we make sure that they truly are a compliance alternative and not something that is either too inflexible or too flexible. So additional time is required.
And will that come back to Planning Commission for review or is it just once tonight's done, we're done with it?
So the housing policy is going on a separate check through the Housing Policy and Development Committee of the City Council, but certainly if an update is needed, we can bring back those proposed changes to the committee as a whole, or we could maybe bring that back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, and then for the 500 units permitted, is that just units that, providing affordable or is it like if there's a 100-unit building that gets proposed, is it 100 that counts toward that 500 or is it only the 8 to 10%?
So we'd be looking at all building permits that fall within a range of 20 units to 49 units. And let's say we had 11 49-unit buildings proposed for construction and that all receive a building permit. Well, now we've hit that 500 mark, but they all have to be in buildings that have that range, 20 to 49. So we would start a clock at that point at which that last permit was issued, that would then count out six months. At that point at which we would apply the threshold at buildings that have 20 units or greater.
Super duper. And then, so my other question is, so I know we saw this at committee at the hall, and you mentioned you got a lot of feedback, but what if our feedback got incorporated into this? Because this looks like a lot of the same thing we saw. So I'm kind of like wondering where, where there was opportunities for our feedback to be incorporated into it or was it already like, is this a courtesy visit or what's?
The purpose of our visit to committee at the hall was certainly to solicit feedback. So I would say that the zoning code text amendment, which I'll go back to here, establishes just a few things. First of all, it's threshold. So the threshold, stated threshold, is 20 units. Then within the ordinance, there's a recognition of this phased implementation for both rental and then ownership. So that is the first piece of the zoning ordinance that is relevant for review today. The next piece takes out that fractional computation because that will only be within the unified housing policy. The next amendment is related to recording of the site plan approvals. So both the current property owners and any future property owners would understand that there is a recording of the site plan that's required, and then there's also a covenant that's recorded against the deed. So there's a recognition for that duration of affordability. So for onsite units without subsidy, it's 20 years. And then I believe it's 30 years for subsidized, 30 years with the revenue offset program. And then lastly is just the effective date. So those are really the three components of the text amendment that were amended. The unified housing policy is still under review and will be going to the Housing Policy and Development Committee in December.
But it's no longer going to be considered as a zoning document of any sort then, the unified housing policy? Or how is it that it's outside of our purview going forward? I guess some of the concerns we had aren't specifically listed there, but I see some things are pulled out to be put in the unified housing policy and it seems a little odd to me that we would take something out of zoning and put it in a document that is out of the reach of this committee.
Sure. That's a great question. So the zoning ordinance really regulates when is this applicable and what is the application trigger. So what we have determined through the Municipal Planning Act is that site plan review per state statute is the appropriate location. So what we did first was identify what is the land use application that would allow for that condition to be placed when applicable. So that's the site plan review. So that's the site plan review. After that, it's determining threshold. The reason why the fractional units was removed is, as you can see from previously, we did a simple roundup, round down, as we do for other things in the zoning ordinance, such as landscaping and screening requirements for canopy trees and shrubs. Fractional computation is used for determining parking requirements, et cetera. Because we wanted to allow for the flexibility for both onsite and then paying an in-lu fee to maximize, and again, to avoid that over-under of one or two units, we thought it was best communicated through the Unified Housing Policy. So the policy and the text amendment work in concert. So essentially, you look to the zoning ordinance to see what the requirement, if the requirement is triggered, and then you would move over to the Unified Housing Policy for more of the detail on how to comply. And then lastly, there will be a compliance manual for more of the details, such as design, making sure that there's the appropriate mix of units for affordable. So for example, if you have a building that has a majority of two-bedroom units, you can't reserve efficiencies or one-bedrooms to meet your affordability requirement. We want to ensure that affordable units are mixed throughout the building, with some exceptions for taller buildings, recognizing that we did not want to devote an entire floor to the affordable units, et cetera. Those kinds of details are in the accompanying documents through the policy and then the compliance manual.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Is that Commissioner Cullen?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Lupe Piers' question, we would appreciate seeing those, even though we may not be voting on them, because we may have input that could be of value.
Yes, the proposed amendment to the Unified Housing Policy is an attachment to today's staff report.
Specifically, the compliance manual that may have some of the details that we were talking about included or not included?
Yes, I think we can absolutely make a return visit, at least through committee of the hall, if not through a public hearing.
Commissioners, other questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Kramer. I'm the president and CEO of the Minneapolis Downtown Council, but I'm here today on behalf of a voluntary collection of developers under the name of Building Minneapolis Together. My work address is 81 South Ninth Street. My home address is 4832 Eleventh Avenue South. I'm pleasantly surprised it's only 6 o'clock, to be honest. I'm sure you are, too. I do appreciate the opportunity to comment on the proposed permanent inclusionary zoning policy, and I'd like to make kind of three related points. You have in your packet a side-by-side comparison of the proposed policy and what our BMT group recommends is an alternative IZ approach. And as the staff presentation indicated, there's a lot of detail, and we tried as a group to comment on each and every aspect of the detail, so I won't repeat all that, but I think there are two essential differences that I want to at least highlight. One is that we think the core requirement for inclusionary zoning ought to be 10% of units and 6% median affordability with access for all projects to the revenue offset policy, which means a project would have to prove its financial need in order to qualify for TIF assistance. We also think the threshold should be set at 50 units, not 20. And then there are many other details that you could look at. So I guess the point there is the local developer community as a collective believes inclusionary zoning can be an effective tool if the policy is not overly broad and if the policy takes into account marketplace realities governing the assembly of private capital to finance additional housing supply in our community. Lack of new supply is our overarching challenge. The affordability issue is embedded in this larger problem of too much demand chasing too few units, which in turn places upward pressure on all rents. The city's inclusionary zoning policy, if it's going to be effective, shouldn't create a barrier to additional private investment, but should harness that investment to help with the affordability challenge. That's what BMT has suggested, which brings me to my second point. Unlike the BMT approach, the recommended policy before you is overly broad and will very likely chill private investment. It's important to realize that inclusionary zoning hasn't really been tested in the Minneapolis market. As you know better than anyone, given the scope of your agendas in late 2018, a slew of projects came in before the interim policy took effect earlier this year. And since then, the interim policy has many generous lanes that projects could go down without being affected by IZ requirements. All that changes dramatically under the proposed permanent policy. So in our view, as experienced developers, taking a more measured initial approach seems wiser than adopting one of the most aggressive IZ policies in the nation right out of the gate. While we do see the dialing back of the baseline requirement that's being recommended now to 8% of the units instead of 10% of the units as a nod towards project financial feasibility as a critical consideration, it's an inadequate nod. If projects can't get financed, they aren't built, and no one wins. And we are concerned, as a group of developers, that's where this is heading with the proposed policy. And my final point. Inclusionary zoning is one of a number of recent housing market regulations being implemented or under consideration for Minneapolis. All well-intentioned and all focused on various aspects of the affordability problem. But at some point, we need to step back, take a breath, and ask, what will the cumulative effect be? Over-regulated housing markets are less affordable markets. If enhancing affordability of and access to more privately-owned units is the goal of these policies, but if in the end, they have the exact opposite effect, then what has been accomplished? As a community, we need to continually ask and analyze that question to make sure unintended consequences aren't ruling the day. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Steve, quick question. So you were here a year ago, as I recall.
I was.
And making some similar points. And in your knowledge, was development chilled by the interim policy?
No, because I don't think the interim policy has really been a fair test of whether inclusionary zoning will or will not chill private investments, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned in my remarks.
Right, but there were a number of people worried that it would chill investment a year ago, as I recall.
Well, not me.
Okay, very good. Next up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. President, members of the commission, my name is Steve Minn with Loopy Development Partners. My address is at 1701 Madison Street Northeast in Minneapolis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Given Mr. Kramer's remarks, I'll try to address some additional points, because I am part of the Building Minneapolis Together Coalition that's been working on this issue now for almost 18 months. I think, as many of you know, I've been here many times with projects. I actually produce almost three affordable units to every one market unit that I produce, so I think I speak with some experience about what is necessary to produce affordable housing and the challenges of doing so. Now, just say from the onset, I am of the belief that more housing generally produces more affordability. When you increase supply, you reduce the demand on the rent price. And I do not believe that this ordinance will have the intended outcome for which the authors hope. It will have, I think, in my effect, a chilling effect on development and reduce production, reduce supply and increase rents, and will have the absolute opposite effect of the intent of the authors. Now, since this body neither authored nor has any power to amend this ordinance, I'm not going to express any angst. But I will take a few moments to talk about what I think is an unfair approach and process of how we got to this point. I think it's somewhat representative of the cynicism of the authors that we don't have an engagement in the committee process that brought this ordinance to its current state. The Grounded Solutions Network that were hired as consultants are actually advocates for affordable housing, not dispassionate consultants. They have not, in 30 cities that they have consulted and ever recommended an inclusionary zoning not be adopted. And so the presumption was that this ordinance would be adopted by the deadline of this year. There was no process for the industry's proposals to be considered in front of the housing committee. We've offered many an opportunity and many a proposal, some of which you have before you in this table that was prepared by our organization. And as Mr. Kramer has alluded to, one of the major tenets that we articulated was that, at minimum, 10% housing with tax increment financing would probably be a good starting point. But unfortunately, that was not adopted, at least in the form of which you've been presented by the staff. It's my belief and that I believe of the organization that I'm a part of here that this ordinance will not create more affordable housing. The ordinance that was in the interim basis has produced very little, and to your point, Mr. President, I do believe that there has been a chilling effect, but you haven't perceived it yet because of the rush to the pipeline at this time last year that all the projects that raced to get before the commission and get approvals before adoption, those are the cranes that you're currently observing. When those cranes are done doing their job, you will have four projects, 10 units, from inclusionary zoning interim ordinance to show for the effort. And I think you're going to anticipate, I think you should anticipate, that the permanent ordinance, which is much more draconian in its implementation and cost to the development community, will have a much more dramatic effect. Frankly, the economics do not work. And I know that from both doing market rate and affordable, that the economics of shifting these costs to the private sector without any additional subsidy will not produce the housing for which the authors believe the outcome should be. You have in your packets, as Mr. Kramer has articulated, this point-by-point refutation of some of the issues. I will just simply summarize by saying the bar should be higher for the exclusion so that we don't lose the opportunity for infill. Whether or not the implementation strategies that Ms. Sether has articulated are clear to you, they're not clear to us. I think there's a lot of thresholds that have to be overcome and managed to get to whether we're going to implement ownership or student into the ordinance. I think it's fraught with complication. Then there might be the complication further of units that get permitted but don't actually get built. That's going to happen quite a bit, and I think you should step back from permitting and think about units that are actually constructed in terms of whatever these new thresholds are going to be. As I wrap up my remarks, I do want to take a moment to thank Andrea Brennan and Angie Skildam, who have been on point on this ordinance and working with the industry. It is not an easy task to respond to your elected masters while still trying to keep connections with the development community at close hand. I think they've done a remarkably good job tolerating what has been a rather calcitrant industry coming along to this point, knowing that they've been whipped by their elected masters to get the ordinance done by this year. And I just want to say they've done a nice job of at least making us feel like we're being listened to by them, even if we're not being listened to by the council. In closing, our worst fears, I hope, are not realized. Evidence from other communities that have adopted these ordinances would suggest that this is too aggressive. Maybe somebody wants to put that on their resume, but there are other communities particularly important, which is now stepping back from their inclusionary zoning ordinance, having found that production precipitously fell off the cliff. They just recently laid off 40% of their development staff because their development staff is funded by development fees, and guess what? They're not generating development fees out there. So they're stepping back and thinking, hmm, we can't even get production done in the Pearl District. Maybe we've gone too far. They did. My biggest fear, and this is my last point, is that the loss of naturally occurring affordable housing is the worst possible outcome that could happen from this ordinance, and I think that is exactly what's going to happen. Investors, who are now faced with less yield and a harder threshold to get a project into the ground, will turn to the vast supply of vintage housing that we have in Minneapolis, which is the '70s, '80s, and early '90s housing that's in place. They will put those properties into play in market rate redevelopment and redeployment and raise those rents. We've seen some of it happen already here in the metropolitan area. Some of those cases have been somewhat notorious, but you can anticipate an acceleration of that concern. We will move backwards, not forwards, in terms of our affordability component. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next. Come on forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Chris Wilson. I work for Project for Pride and Living. We're a nonprofit agency. We're located at 1035 East Franklin Avenue. Personally, I live in the city also. I live at 416 Fifth Avenue Southeast. So I live over by the university. Just wanted to say that Project for Pride and Living has been working with the BMT group and, you know, is kind of, is largely feels that most of their conclusions make sense as tweaks. Within the larger context, let me just back up for a second. Within the larger context of what the city is trying to do, I just want to commend the city, the staff, the leadership of the city for trying to address the affordable housing project, a problem in the city. It's something that, obviously, we've been working on and is very near and dear to our heart as a nonprofit agency. And so I just want to say, I really feel like, you know, almost to a person, everyone has stepped up and tried to come up with what is a good solution to this. And I think, again, I want to reiterate the fact that the, you know, kind of an appreciation for what the housing ecosystem is trying to do is, I think, really being addressed by the city in many ways. I do think, though, having said that, it's going to probably, it doesn't really quite pencil out. I think, you know, to Mr. Kramer and Mr. Minn's point, it doesn't quite pencil out there. And so I think there's probably another iteration of the ordinance coming, and so I just want to kind of put this on the table as, you know, wait and see and maybe, you know, kind of move it through at that point. But I just want to kind of encourage you to kind of continue to kind of observe this and to see how it goes as a city and as a commission, and just to make sure that it does, in fact, have the effect that you're looking for. So that was, I just wanted to say that we've been participating in the process and that we feel like, again, in general, 98% of this is fantastic. So just want to, don't want to lose that in the, while we're, you know, kind of arguing over the little things here and there. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, please come forward to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Lower this a tiny bit. Hi, my name is Rebecca Cowan. I live at 633 Ontario, and I'm here on behalf of the Minnesota Student Association. I'm our local government coordinator, and we represent the 30,000 undergraduate students at the University of Minnesota Twin Cities. One thing I wanted to bring to light within this policy is the current recommendations that we have for the student population. This is an improvement on the interim policy, which completely neglected that area and the private student developments surrounding it, but it does rely on those federal eligibility requirements defined within the Internal Revenue Code. So these are in place for any city TIF-funded building simply because of a state statute. However, the majority of these student-focused developments are not using this funding source, so in our opinion, it doesn't necessarily make sense to rely on these same restrictions. Within these restrictions, we also know Within these restrictions, we also know that only about 3.3% of all students at the University of Minnesota Twin Cities would be eligible for the affordable units under this policy. And this is under a few specific categories and not necessarily demonstrated financial need. In contrast to the TIF requirements, Section 8 allows families or full-time students to qualify if the student and the family are income-eligible. There doesn't seem to be that option within the tax-structured eligibility requirements, which is why we're proposing a second alternative for that. Under a different alternative, we could increase eligibility for Pell Grant recipients in the non-TIF-funded buildings. So under the Pell Grants, this is about 6,300 students. It's about 10% to 11% of the entire student population and about 20% of the undergraduate student population. This funding is based on demonstrated financial need, with the majority going to students whose families are below the $30,000 income mark, and the top of that is about $60,000 to $65,000 for students receiving Pell Grants. So they do have demonstrated financial need. This isn't just saying any student, because we're taking out a lot of debt and having a lot of loans, we should get into these units. It is a very specific section that does have that requirement. Pell Grant recipients also see about 10% lower graduation rates than the rest of the student body, so I think it is important that we're considering how we can increase ways for the end-to-access affordability, live near campus, live near the resources that they need to succeed. One concern that's been brought up about this is how that would affect the rest of the city and the affordable units in different sections. We have been talking to different council members and are very open to restricting this within the university district area overlay. Historically, that's only been utilized for parking, but I think it, the geographic definition offers a unique opportunity to try and increase the student housing options without affecting the majority of the rest of the city. The other thing we've been advocating for is an alternative standard for affordable rent. Full-time students don't have the same income situations that the rest of the area does. We're very limited in how much we can work and still go to school. We're taking out an increased amount of debt. One thing that's been proposed with the council members is indexing that towards the minimum wage, so saying a student shouldn't necessarily have to work more than 10 hours a week, say, to afford the affordable, to afford the reduced rent. So indexing it something like that, that is accessible for students, you can easily apply it to the per-bed leases that are set up within a lot of the student developments and increase those options. The other question we've gotten is why this should be a priority for the city. We're not saying the city of Minneapolis is responsible for handling all of the student college affordability crisis that's going on right now. This is a step towards that and a step towards addressing that from all of these different angles. We are also calling upon the University of Minnesota, the Foundation Real Estate Office, different options that could also be providing student affordability and those alternative options. We're saying this is a step. We're saying that if you're trying to create mixed-income housing in these private developments throughout the city, that students should also be included in a fair and accessible way. And there are a few other students today that'll talk a little bit more about that affordability and housing experience and why this is a little bit different than the rest of the city and why this should be a priority.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brian Rosas. I use pronouns like he, him, and they, them. I'm here today because I am with Rebecca and just many of the other students here. I think that the exclusionary zoning policy is a really great idea, and I'm really glad that we all share the same value of trying to create more affordable housing. But I definitely think, in agreement with Rebecca, that more student voices need to be heard. Our experiences are very different from other people in the cities, unfortunately. I was a student over at the University of Minnesota. I would sometimes have to decipher whether I wanted to get groceries for one week or pay my rent. And that's the case for a lot of University of Minnesota students, especially in the undergrad department. So a lot of us often have to deal with the debt of student tuition, groceries, and any other bills that we might have. So rent for us is kind of a big deal. Affordable housing is a big deal, and it should be a big deal for everyone who lives in the cities, especially developers who want to create housing in the areas that we are going to school at. For us, we can't really live too far from campus because, like Rebecca said, our resources are there, our health resources, our emergency resources are all there. So it's really crucial for us to have affordable units around our area. And unfortunately, there are so many units at the University of Minnesota. If you go to Stadium Village, there's a million apartments there, but there are so many vacant units there because no one can afford them. And that's the case for a lot of housing over at the University of Minnesota. So it's definitely something to consider, and it's definitely something to look at. And I just hope and, yeah, I'm just hopeful that you continue to work with students, especially in the undergrad department at the University of Minnesota and other surrounding schools, around zoning issues and housing issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Justin Crowell, and I am here today with Rebecca. And I want to start off by saying that the inclusionary zoning policy is a great idea. I think that affordable housing is something that a lot of folks benefit from, especially students, because for a lot of students, housing, especially affordable housing, is a really big source of stability. And as someone who, as someone who struggled with finances, especially when it came to paying rent, paying for school, and a lot of the other expenses that come with being a student, knowing that I have, you know, like a home somewhere to go back to at the end of a long day was important. And the current recommendations in the policy only touch on about 3.3% of students who are eligible for affordable housing. And I ask that everyone up here thinks about extending that eligibility to students who are Pell-eligible. That would increase the number of students to about 20% of the undergrads in this area. And it's a basic resource that students need and something that, gosh, sorry, my brain cells are not working. And having, sorry, having this for students is, like, it's a basic necessity. And I urge everybody to really think about this and think about this and think about the number of folks that are going to be affected by this policy and really the benefits that it has for them and how affordable housing and really meets a need that is very often overlooked, especially when it comes to our student populations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sam Parmakar. I'm with the Minnesota Student Association. I use pronouns like he, him, and his, and I live at 1401 Sixth Street Southeast. So I want to just take a step back for a minute and talk more about the continually rising cost of college more broadly. Obviously, tuition is something that continues to rise and does play a major role in students' ability to afford the cost of college. But what we also know is that non-tuition expenses are rising at a very rapid rate, and this is an often overlooked area when we have conversations about how students are able to afford college. And a really big part of that is housing expenses. We know that housing around the University of Minnesota has become more and more unaffordable over the years, and we know that this is something that has disproportionately impacted lower-income students and has had the effect of pushing them out of our university community and making a space where college is more inaccessible. And I think the city council, in addition to federal and state actors, can play a really important role in making sure that we start to bring down some of those costs and we do start to tackle this college affordability crisis. I think the proposed recommendations for the inclusionary zoning ordinance are a really important step in this direction. As has been touched on earlier, the current inclusionary zoning policy, if it were to apply to the university area, would only actually apply to about 3.3% of the student population. And that has the effect of creating this pretty broad gap of students who really are unable to afford this housing that is around the university area but don't necessarily fall into these very strict federal definition requirements. And so by using something like Pell eligibility to determine whether or not a student qualifies, we can open up these affordable units to about 20% of the undergraduate population or 10% of the overall student population. And that would have the really great effect of making sure that students who really need access to these affordable units are able to get it. And in addition, I think that indexing the definition of affordability to minimum wage is a really great way to ensure that we're actually accurately reflecting students' ability to pay for these things, rather than using measures like the area median income, which don't necessarily reflect the unique living and working situation that many students experience. So I really would urge all the members of this commission, as well as members of the city council, to support the recommended changes to the inclusionary zoning policy. And again, I really think that this is a really important step that we can take here on the local level to make sure that we are creating an environment where higher education is more accessible to folks from all different sorts of backgrounds, which I think is a good thing for our city, it's a good thing for our state, it's a good thing for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Abdulzif Mohammed. I'm a part of the Minnesota Student Association, and my address is 614 Delaware Street Southeast. I find it great that affordable housing is a topic that we're finally extensively talking about. If the goal is to make the city more attractive to students from different backgrounds, one thing that needs to be highlighted is the perspective of a low-income student from an outside community. I'm a first-year student at the U of M, coming from Woodbury, Minnesota, and I'm currently living in the residential dorms. I'm already thinking about housing for next year, and I'm seriously considering commuting from home due to the very high costs that are in the Minneapolis area. While commuting is an option that should be considered, we have to keep in mind that affordable housing should be accessible to all students. Although Minneapolis is thriving, the cost is what's pushing students to live outside of the city. If the city wants to retain young people and make sure that they can thrive in the community, we have to make sure that the policies affect, reflect the will of the constituents. I hope that you keep this in mind when you're coming to your decision. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to testify? Come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sean Lim. My pronouns are him, his. My address is currently 850 Charles Avenue, and I'm currently an undergraduate student at the University of Minnesota Twin Cities, as well as an organizer for the Minnesota Youth Collective, a statewide nonpartisan nonprofit. Although my classes take place in Minneapolis and in Falcon Heights, and most of my classmates live on or around campus, I am simply not able to pay rent on campus. My parents are both landlords and property managers in the Twin Cities. They help rent to low-income families who rely on Section 8 vouchers and other need-based aid. Even so, I believe that inclusionary zoning is an especially beneficial ordinance because affordable housing is both necessary and lacking in this city. And I believe that this ordinance will greatly improve the lives of countless individuals who reside in our city. Even though I'm not a Pell Grant recipient, I, along with so many others, countless friends and classmates, struggle to pay for on-campus housing with our limited incomes, working 18 hours a week, 20 hours a week, 30, 40 hours a week. I've been essentially priced out of living on campus and currently reside in the East Midway neighborhood of St. Paul. I wasn't able to find any affordable housing last year on campus, neither, and I wasn't able to find any affordable housing on campus this year either. And if it weren't for the Green Line, I would not be able to go to classes on a daily basis. Countless others aren't able to find affordable housing as well. So this is why we must ensure that inclusionary zoning, as others have stated, reflects that college students living here in Minneapolis need affordable housing. Right now, only 3% of students at the U are eligible, and we should expand this. If this ordinance and pricing were indexed with measurements such as minimum wage, individuals who rely on Pell Grants would be at least twice as eligible for affordable housing. I personally make more than minimum wage, and I still can't afford it. So this is why this is necessary. I appreciate all the work that you've been doing, will continue to do, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lauren Myers, and I live at 808 13th Ave Southeast. So thank you for, I guess, opening up this conversation today and all the work you've been doing around inclusionary zoning. We really appreciate hearing this discourse. But I'm here from the University of Minnesota and the Minnesota Student Association to ask you guys to keep considering bringing this above the federal levels for student affordability and student inclusionary zoning. So as a lot of people here have mentioned, with the current federal levels, only 3.3% of students at the U are going to be eligible for this affordable housing, but I can tell you right now that more than 3.3% of students really cannot afford housing on campus, as again, many of the other people here have said tonight. And having this unaffordable housing around campus just not setting our students up for academic success in a couple of ways. Is that students, yes, they do have the option of commuting, but part of the reason we don't have affordable housing around campus is because a few years ago, the U realized that students do better when they live on or very near campus and made that first year mandatory, and that's when we saw these housing, first-year students had to live on campus, and that's when we saw these housing prices starting to rise. Students have a lot of events, they have classes very late at night, very early at morning. Commuting is really hard. It's terrible, to be honest, and in the, especially with Minnesota winters, it becomes quite unsafe because professors are not willing to be flexible when there's icy roads and students can't make it to campus safely. And in another way, we're setting students up for academic failures by some of this unaffordable housing is the amount we are asking them to work. Low-income students have to work so much more, and that disproportionately affects Black Latinx and female students. That was just released in a report from Georgetown University, that they're having to work a lot more than their peers. And actually, 70% of students that are full-time are working at least part-time to help afford things like tuition, books, housing. But we also see with that that students that are working more than 15 hours a week, like many of these students have to, are receiving a huge drop in their grades. So students who are working below 15 hours a week on average are holding about a B average, but above that 15 hours a week, we're seeing a C average. So it's a huge difference, and that's disproportionately affecting a lot of low-income, again, Black, Latinx, and female students. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Janet. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a student at the University of Minnesota. I live at 806 Fourth Street Southeast. I first would like to thank you all for considering affordability and inclusionary zoning. And as emphasized, as others who spoke before, students need affordable housing more than ever, especially given that the University of Minnesota is accepting more students compared to years past and more students who are Pell-eligible than compared to years past. Students from all over the state, country, and world come to the city of Minneapolis for their studies. And college is hard enough, and on top of balancing extracurriculars and a job, being able to afford to keep a roof under their head is the bare minimum. Within the last several years, students have been showing up at the table, knocking doors, registering others to vote, and showing up to the polls and historic numbers. Last year alone, almost 60% of the students at the university voted in the midterm elections, which is a 136 increase from the 2014 election, and this number is only expected to grow within the next several years. The point is, students are getting more engaged in the political system, working to create the change they want to see, as well as watching legislators closely. That is why students are here, sharing their perspectives here today at this hearing. Having a roof over our heads is not a privilege, it's a fundamental human right. We should be concerned about the next course paper or exam, not if we can afford rent the next month. Please consider extending inclusionary zoning requirements to Pell-eligible students, or consider an alternative index to mark affordability to make sure that housing in Minneapolis is accessible to as many students as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward to state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Farnsworth. I live at 229 Eighth Avenue Southeast in the Marcy Holmes neighborhood. I'm here with the Minnesota Student Association. I'm also one of the student representatives on the Marcy Holmes Neighborhood Association Board. I think a lot of my student colleagues have said it really well, and so I won't repeat what's been said so far, but wanted to add an example of where student affordability is really working in intersection with developers. So as you probably have heard, right now, students have been really involved in the conversation about the McDonald's development in Dinkytown. And where we've seen something positive happening is seeing CA Ventures, the developers there, working to establish student affordability levels within that specific development. So for us, just the one thing I wanted to add to this conversation is seeing that developers have partaken in that conversation with us on this topic, because student affordability was really promising to us, and thank you for considering students as you consider this as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Is it this one? Or this? Oh, they're all on. Hi. My name is Levi O'Toole. I am the Campus Life Committee Director with the Minnesota Student Association, so I'm at the University of Minnesota. I'm a proud resident of Como. I love it. I live at 1078 18th Avenue. I am also here speaking as a Pell Grant recipient myself, and what I wanted to say is that I'm from Minnesota. I've lived here my whole life, and when I came to college, I looked all over. Like, in the south and out east, in New York, I even looked at Madison in Iowa, to find the place that I wanted to study and be a community member at. But I chose Minneapolis, right? I had other options, but I wanted to come here, and I love it here. I'm a proud member of the community, but I also want to say that to be a member of the Minneapolis community as a student, it costs a lot. I wanted to go back to the point that Lauren made about academic success. Last year, I lived in an apartment in Dinkytown. The rent was about $650 a month for a shared bedroom in a two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment, which seems really average in terms of Dinkytown apartments. But I'm also a PolySci student, which means we work unpaid internships. Between the unpaid internship that I was working, as well as the diner job that I needed to make ends meet in terms of groceries and rent, I was working 30 hours a week while taking classes and doing extracurricular activities, which makes succeeding academically a lot harder. And so I think that it's really important that we expand it to make Pell Grant recipients eligible for this, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have a zoning code text amendment for us. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and move approval of Item A, the zoning code text amendment.
And a point of clarification for staff. We are returning Items 520 and 525. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the staff recommendation would be to adopt ordinance amendments for Chapter 530 Site Plan Review and Chapter 535 Regulations of General Applicability and returning Chapters 530. 520 and 525 to the authors.
Is that amendable as an amendment?
I will amend my motion to revoke that.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Your motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I can speak to my motion. I'm supportive of this. First, I wanted to thank the staff for all the work that they put into this. I know this was a very long and deliberative process. I do have some reservations, though. I think certainly this is a policy that can really alter the housing market, and certainly we'll see some changes moving forward. I do think inclusionary zoning is only part of the equation to addressing our affordable housing issues, and certainly would encourage our city council representatives to provide a robust funding level to our subsidy programs. I think adding to the supply of income-restricted housing is really going to be what will do the most to address that. But I do think this is still part of the equation, so it's still important. And I can sympathize with some of the testifiers who spoke to the need to add market-rate housing. I do think that adding to the supply of market-rate housing in the long term will address affordability issues in the city. Part of the reason we experience the challenges we currently are is because 30 or 40 years ago, we weren't adding a lot of rental housing in the city. So there isn't a lot of that mid-range product out there. And hopefully, by adding housing now, we'll be in a better situation in 30, 40, 30 or 40 years from now. I think the consultant did a really good job, provided a lot of analysis about the feasibility of this, so I'm confident that this will not completely shut down the market for housing in Minneapolis. I acknowledge there are probably some developers that maybe don't want to deal with some of the monitoring requirements of this, and will maybe focus on projects elsewhere. I do think, though, there are developers who are willing to work with this framework. Certainly, just today, as staff noted, we saw a project coming through the approval process that was subject to the interim requirements and did not otherwise include subsidy for those affordable units. I do think the housing market is always evolving, so if there are components of this that aren't working well at some point, the city can always change those. So I, and I also think because this policy provides for some alternatives, such as the In-Lu fee, it's kind of a multifaceted approach instead of simply a regulatory framework. So I did want to address the student issue, wanted to thank the students who testified today. I know we normally don't hear from a lot of students here, and they're residents of Minneapolis, just like everyone else, so it's great to hear from them. And I would encourage, as this policy goes through the council approval process, that the council look at some alternatives for addressing those issues. I know it's hard to be specific in this meeting to hash all that out, but I would certainly be open to different requirements in a certain geographic area, or looking at different ways of characterizing the affordability requirement for students. Because as noted, the federal requirements for eligibility don't really allow for very many full-time students. So if there are ways that that can be expanded or adjusted, I'm certainly supportive of that. So, again, thanks to the staff and to the consultant.
Commissioner Lupe here.
I'm yes, thank you, Jericho. Yeah, I just wanted to touch on just three things really briefly. One is, again, staff has done an awesome job presenting this to us and being thorough, as always. I do want to say I do have concerns about kind of the bulk and intent of this kind of being removed from the Planning Commission by, through a uniform housing, or Unified Housing Policy. I guess I feel as though there's some value to not just engaging us in terms of talking at us, but actually taking our feedback and incorporating it in a broader way in this policy. So I guess I have reservations just on that level. My second thing is in regard to the students who testified here tonight, I do want to say I think that it was, to me, it seems completely reasonable for what they're asking regarding the Pell Grant. It seems like a very clear-cut way to determine eligibility without being overly burdensome to students. I know when you're already applying for FAFSA and all those other things, which I have no doubt have probably gotten way more complicated since when I went to college, the last thing you need is to try and do acrobats through your tax forms, which are often done probably through your parents, to try and prove that you can afford housing. Since it's already kind of been determined through your applica, or eligibility for Pell Grants, it seems to me that's a pretty clear hurdle and not overly burdensome. I would actually, would like to see it expanded a little bit beyond that, however we can do that. I think investing in our students, I always, whether they're, you know, at the university or a trade school, is really investing in the future of our city. Because I know graduating with student debt really is not a pleasant place to be. I'm hopeful that maybe we can ease that in the future, not our purview, obviously, regarding tuition or housing costs specifically, but I think that it bears some attention here as we pursue affordable housing going forward, because it does weigh on people, and these are future members of society that we want to contribute. It's hard to contribute if you can't even afford to live there. So I just want to say I fully support the things they were saying tonight, and actually would prefer that goes even further. Lastly, I do want to say, reiterate my concerns from when it was brought to committee, the whole regarding the compliance alternatives. I guess it all goes down to what the intent of this is, and I think we all know this in and of itself won't solve any sort of affordability crisis. It's, as we keep hearing, one piece of a puzzle. But I guess I thought that the larger intent behind inclusionary zoning was to stop concentrating poverty in certain areas and to actually ensure that people lived by people who weren't just like them. I think there's a benefit to society as a whole that way, and particularly when it comes to income levels. I think people should be able to live throughout the city, not just in certain designated areas, pockets of affordability. I think that when people get to know each other, they form stronger bonds, and you can't really do that if we segregate everyone to different little buildings throughout our city. So I guess I have a problem with the off-site development as an option. I know it's not going to change, but I need to voice it again anyway. Whether it's within a half-mile, or even if you can make it political and allow it to be even farther through a council process, which I think is a big, huge loophole, I think that's a missed opportunity for our community to actually get to know one another and people not like them, and learn to share hardships that way. I also have concerns about the In-Lu fee. I understand how it's easier, and I certainly don't want to make barriers, but I feel like the new amenities then that you can live in a building that paid to have poor people not live there, and I think that that is kind of shameful. Again, it goes to my interpretation of the intent, which was to create a complete community where people know one another and we care about each other. We don't just voice people that we don't look like or who are a different income class elsewhere. So on those philosophical points, because that's what my understanding of the intent of this was, I object to these things. I understand that there's a give-and-take, that developers have to have a carrot and a way out, because they have to do certain acrobatics too, but I guess that, again, goes to the intent. If the intent was just to create a quantity of units, then I guess that's one way of doing it. I thought the intent was to not concentrate poor people together, but to rather place them throughout our city in situations where they can talk with other people and people can see what it's like to live that way every day, instead of assuming that they know because someone down the block happens to be poor. And especially given that our architecture in the city highly reflects that our affordable housing developments tend to look cheap, and our market rates tend to look really drastically different. So on that note, I guess I will say that I am very much encouraged by the willingness to explore inclusionary zoning. I'm very hesitant as to these, the route we've chosen to go, and I am even more concerned that we are kind of really removed from the discussion going forward, other than to have a report back to us. So with that, I'll close my comments.
Very good. And before we move on to our next commenters, staff hopefully pointed out that we never got a second to Commissioner Brown's motion.
One second.
There are several seconds. There we go. Commissioner Cronzer, then Commissioner Coleman, then Commissioner Allison.
Thank you, President. I just wanted to put this amendment in a little bit of context. This amendment clearly has financial impacts on development moving forward. The city is also going through a massive upzoning in the near future. Those financial impacts are unknown, but clearly going to go in the opposite direction of this amendment. So, you know, there's going to be some new equilibrium having to be reached here as development was forward in the city in the next 10 years. I'm confident the city council will monitor this and find that equilibrium.
Very good. Commissioner Coleman.
And not to add to the comments that have been made and not just to repeat those, I want to say that I too thank staff for the efforts that they have put in in thinking creatively about the application of this, in listening to all parties, in reaching out to all parties, in getting a on-the-record compliment from Steve Min, that's a plus. And in that vein, I want to say that the way it's structured with the review, I think we have opportunity to continue to listen to the developers, continue to listen to people who are advocating for affordable housing, and continue to adjust. If anything, this is a proposal that anticipates evolution, and that's what's going to make it successful. We will track the numbers, we will hear about the numbers, and we will adjust as necessary. We are not in the business of tanking development in our community, and I don't believe that this will. I don't believe the sky is falling. I think we will adjust if we even get close to that. And I would say that I, as in contrast to statements earlier, I appreciate the compliance alternatives. I think those are what are going to make this successful. I think we will see all types of inclusionary zoning options used, and that will ensure that the market remains robust.
Commissioner Allison.
Thank you. I also want to thank staff for working on this. I'm glad we're having this conversation. My other hat, I know the Minneapolis School District is working on a comprehensive district design, hoping to increase the integration and achievement of our students in all our schools. And for that, the Minneapolis School Board recently passed a resolution discussing our values on how the staff could go about developing, you know, schools that were working for our students. But part of the resolution also called on our partners, working with our partners, to address some of the external factors that impact our students' lives and their achievement in schools. And one of those, the first one actually, was providing safe, affordable, and stable housing opportunities throughout the city, something that the market on its own has not been able to do. And I don't know if this is the right way, but I'm glad we're having this discussion. So, thank you.
Commissioners Sweetsie and then Commissioner Schrader.
Just a couple of things to add. Again, trying not to repeat what's been said. I have mentioned at a couple of meetings, kind of the same thing Commissioner Coleman said, I don't think the sky is falling, but I urge, it looks in here like there's a mandatory review at 18 months and then some afterwards. I think, you know, this body would probably benefit from some more and additional review on it. I'm especially sensitive to the, kind of the practical concerns that seem real that Mr. Min raised. I mean, the one about why is it units permitted but not built, things like this, that this can't possibly foresee all of those kinds of things that the people in the field can and other things. So I'm hopeful that everybody will be able to work together on that, as everybody else has said. With respect to the student issues, it's great to see the young people here and engaged. I do, however, see it a little bit differently. People are talking about what their understanding of the intent of this is. My understanding of it primarily is that it's meant to create long-term affordable housing for kind of long-term residents who, you know, find themselves without these things, or the people who might be getting displaced by some of this other development. We heard about that earlier tonight. And that's not that I'm unsympathetic to the student issue. I have two college students myself. But as this moves forward, I guess I would ask maybe for that to be a separate conversation. I see those things as really very different. And while there is some room in here for students, I mean, what about, what about the student who wants to live in an apartment in northeast but goes to school in Brooklyn Park at Hennepin Tech or something like that? So I would think that before, I mean, these are wonderful things to talk about, but it seems to me that that kind of policy needs a lot more work.
Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you. I first wanted to thank my colleagues. A lot of really great discussion, and I'll kind of come back to some of those points. But really want to also just thank staff. There's a lot to this, and it took a lot to put it together. And I think it is a great policy. I think we're going to learn a lot more in the 18 months that this starts to go on, and we'll be able to update, kind of get that equilibrium, as you talked about. Also, just kind of want to add that this is something, you don't only have to come to plan, you can go to Planning Commissioner, zoning and planning anytime, and this is what people are calling for. They're calling for some way for the city to address affordability. And this is just one part. This is just one thing, but we need to make sure that this is front and center, that we're listening to the city when they're saying we need to have affordable housing, that this needs to be a part. Really excited to see, you know, to have this be one part of it and make sure that it works with all the other things that the city's, like, Housing Department works on, making sure this works with that, and that IC works with those other policies. And again, I'm just kind of looking forward to seeing, kind of appreciate everybody's comments today, and I think this is really going to help the city moving forward.
Commissioners, any other comments?
Couple thoughts as well. You know, I think the commissioners, I agree with all my colleagues on this, and that it's really important for us to be iterative in our approach to policy development, as I think I've stated before. You know, one thing that I still find sort of odd about this is the, like, building a certain number of units and then waiting six months and kicking in. And having heard, you know, some of the questions about how this pencils and so on and so forth, I wonder if it makes more sense to phase in the percent of required affordable, rather than having this sort of odd, undetermined waiting period, so that, you know, initially that requirement would be that you have 2%, then 4%, then 6%, then 8%, up to the top. It just seems very strange to have this number of units, whether it's permitted or constructed or whatever. And that also would allow us to do some of that kind of iterative analysis in the process of seeing it come forward. So we'd see, you know, well, 4% worked fine, and people developed at 4%, and we hit 6%, and then Planning Commission meetings got really short. And then maybe we'd all just keep it at 6%. But that just seems to me a more sort of logical way of going about this, and we had some discussion about that at our committee of the whole as well. I think I hear Commissioner Sweetsie's points about student housing as having sort of more dynamics than the University of Minnesota, and I think that's a great point. I also think that when we are, one of the testifiers made the point that we have to be really conscious about how we set the rates there, and that's challenging. You know, I do think that this is important to get in place right now with the 2040 plans adoption, and Commissioner Cronzer's note that we did just add a lot of permitted density to the city. And, you know, one of the things I think that that does, or I know that that does, is that increases the underlying land value. And that can either go to the existing landholders, or we can kind of reclaim some of that value for the public benefit. And so I think this is an important time to do this, because once land transfers at those higher values, then, you know, then we're asking landowners to take a really substantial loss, and that will be a detriment to development in the city. So getting this stuff on board early is really important so that we can try to kind of move with the market on both adding density and seeing some of these other benefits. So unless there are other comments from commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Item A, Returning 520 and 525, and recommending 530 and 535. Please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
8-0.
That motion passes. That concludes our business, official business for the evening. Can really, are there any staff updates or other business updates?
One quick update. We did have an appeal of the Planning Commission decision to deny the Starbucks drive-through at 46 and Hiawatha. That went to the Zoning and Planning Committee for a public hearing last Thursday, and it was continued one cycle to the December 5 meeting to give the applicant a little bit more time to talk things through with Public Works on the access issues. So I'll report back after that.
Very good. With that, meeting is adjourned.